Good evening.
Good evening.
Today is October the 3rd, 2023. I would thought for today is to be be the change that you wish to see in the world. That's Mahatma Gandhi. I'm going to go ahead and officially call this meeting to order tonight. I'm going to ask if, um, let's see here, Commissioner Henderson, if you will lead us in our pledge. I'm going to see what Commissioner Edwards, I'm sorry, in our prayer tonight. And I'm going to see what Commissioner Edwards leads us in our pledge. Yes, sir.
Thank you. What I want to say is, most gracious having followed coming fully with thanksgiving in our hearts we come in. Just thanking for just allowing us to see another day, another, another afternoon, another night. Because we know without your mercy and grace, it would be impossible. Because without you, my father, we can do nothing. I mean, nothing. But we feel we can do all things. And we just thank you. And we will forever follow you. This we pray. In our Lord's name, Jesus Christ's name, amen.
Amen. Thank you guys for that. Um, I seek a motion that we approve the agenda, please.
Go ahead.
Second. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Next is citizen comments. This is an opportunity that will allow citizens to make comments about agenda topics only. You have three minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please. Agenda topics only. Thank you. Uh, next is the chairman's report. Today we have a proclamation that we want to do. Um, today is, uh, this is National 4H Week, and we're excited about our 4Hers. Um, they are actually here with us tonight. Uh, Ms. Hamp, if you would, please read the proclamation before we bring them up.
Yes, Sir Chairman. National 4H Week Proclamation. Whereas the young people of Georgia and Newton County are our greatest natural resource. And whereas the 4H program has assisted in the growth and development of Georgia and Newton County youth for a hundred nineteen years. And whereas adult volunteer leaders and advisors are devoting their talents, leadership, and resources to serving these leaders of tomorrow. And whereas 4H helps its members discover and acquire the essential elements of positive youth development, of mastery, generosity, belonging, and independence in the areas of leadership, civic engagement, healthy living, and agriculture, and STEM. And whereas Newton County is Georgia 4H and entices young people and adults to become involved in the educational and entertaining programs offered by the 4H program in Newton County through the University of Georgia College and Agricultural and Environmental Sciences Cooperative Extension. Now, therefore, I, Chairman Marcelo Baines, along with the Newton County Board of Commissioners, do declare and proclaim the week of October 1st through the 7th, 2023, to be Newton County 4H Week and urge all of our citizens to assist in according this observance, the attention and importance to which it is so rightly entitled. And witness whereof, I've hereunto set my hand and affixed our seal this third day of October, 2023. And Chairman Baines, I'd also like to note that we do have our admin building light at the very top, um, reflecting green for this entire week.
Thank you. Ashley, if y'all would come on up, please. Y'all want to tell us a little bit about, um, what you guys got going on?
Sure. Thank you for having us here tonight. Um, my name is Charlene Scott. I'm the 4H agent here in Newton County. And I did provide you guys a little bit of an overview at your seat, um, for you to look at. But tonight, we're going to highlight a couple of amazing things that have happened this past year in 4H. Um, it's the 2022-2023 4H year, as we just started the 23-24 4H year. Um, there's lots of accomplishments, but I'm going to go over the ones that are highlighted in green because those really stand out. Um, we did have one participant on our high school level move on to our state contest for public speaking, which is amazing, beating thirty-nine other counties in her compet- or in her speaking category. Um, we did have the number-one horse judging team, um, in the state. So our juniors team, which is fourth through eighth grade, and coached by Ashley Best, our Ag and Natural Resources Agent. Um, they placed first in the whole state, which is amazing. We did have two high school 4Hers, um, represent Newton County at the Georgia Cooperative Council Youth Leadership Conference. The only way to get invited to that is to have a, um, sponsor. And so Georgia Snapping Shoals sponsored them. Um, so we had two youth go to that. We also had three youth qualify in our horse state show and moved on and represented Georgia in the Southern Region Horse Show. I don't like to brag on myself, but, um, I was awarded the State Award for New Extension Professional through our Epsilon Sigma Phi Alpha Beta Chapter, um, which you have to be inducted into. And then I was awarded the State Award for that. We also have a program that we're working with Nebraska State and Penn, Penn University, Penn State University, which is called Adulting 101: Teaching Life Skills to Kids. Um, we presented that at this, this past national conference. We won two state awards and a regional award for that, um, curriculum. On the inside is a little bit of a highlight of our in-school educational program. We are in eight public schools and three private schools this year, reaching about eleven hundred students every single month, teaching public speaking, agro-science, communities, doing community service, and educational contests. And then for our community program last year, we reached thirteen thousand five hundred and thirty-seven educational contacts, um, which is pretty amazing. So we are ser-
With just two people, so.
With two staffers. This is DJ Dobbs, our 4H program assistant. I failed on that part. Um, we also have with us three of our 4Hers and two of our 4H volunteers. Um, which I'll talk about real quick on the back. But I did give you a highlight of some of the demographics of what we serve across the county. Um, but reaching those two, that many contacts with just two of us is a big feat. On the back, our program is growing, which is fantastic. Um, but with a growing program comes growing challenges. But our youth have been able to serve nine hundred and forty-five hours of community service in a year. We've had adult volunteers serve three hundred and fifty-eight hours. Um, and then this year, fundraising grants and in-kind donations have been phenomenal. And we've been able to raise over seventy thousand dollars for the Newton County 4H program. We have highlighted four focus areas that we plan to focus on over the next couple of years. Public speaking being one, science and STEM being the second, mental health awareness being the third, and then continuing focusing on those life skills. Our young people need it. We do want to highlight, we have monthly meetings that happen once a month at Turner Lake. Um, we have, it's called Club Night. We have four clubs. We have a horse club, cooking club, wildlife club, and STEM club. And starting in October, the people have asked, and we are delivering. We have a cloverbud group, which is kindergarten through third grade that we are adding. And it's completely being run by these two volunteers. So we're excited to have that.
Charlene, uh, we wanted to just take an opportunity to say thank you, uh, for all the things that you are doing for our youth in this community. It's amazing, um, uh, the way you're have went into the schools and y'all are providing these programs. So thank you so much. I have, I want to present this proclamation to you, but I'm going to ask the entire board to come up so we can get a group picture with everybody's.
Awesome.
It's okay. Y'all, if y'all don't mind, come on up, commissioners. Congratulations, Al Gore. Again, thank you so much for all that you do in the community. Um, next is the, um, county manager's report. We, um, Mr. Cooper is not here with us tonight, and, uh, Jason Johnson is filling in tonight. Mr. Johnson has a report that he want to give, sir. If you would, please come on up here. Mr. Johnson said he's a preacher, so he feel more comfortable standing at the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I am, uh, going to give you the county manager's report tonight. Since Mr. Cooper's been here, he has focused on, uh, three things really, and that's people, purpose, and processes. And our work's, uh, predicated on that three P approach, and, uh, he's kind of grilled it into us. And, uh, so I'm going to present tonight, uh, the first P, which is people, and our relationship with them. Uh, now, I know that you have heard, uh, from some of our other workforce teams. Jane Brown, uh, he heads up our infrastructure team. Ms. Amanda Schumaker, she, uh, heads up our human services workforce team. And then Brittany White, uh, she, uh, heads up our administrative services team. And tonight, I'm here to talk about my team, which is government relations. And, uh, I hope you can see there that, um, the different, uh, agencies and departments that make up my team. Uh, there are government buildings and facilities, the Newton County Extension Services, uh, Newton County Environmental Services, and then, um, I will continue to serve as a liaison with our court services, as well as our city and our state agencies. And the goal is just kind of very simple. It's just, we're going to try to improve communication with some of these outlying offices and agencies to assure, uh, uh, collaboration, and then just kind of making sure we're continuing to meet the needs of our citizens there. So very briefly, I want to highlight each of these departments or agencies. The first one's my department. I've, uh, had the pleasure of working in this department for twenty-five years now, and that's government buildings and facilities. And we provide all aspects of, uh, building maintenance. Uh, most all, uh, um, the maintenance requests go through our department, and we handle those requests either through in-house staffing or outside vendors. Um, and this provides the county with, uh, work order documentation, uh, competitive pricing, uh, expedited services, and then accountability for the services that are rendered. This year, uh, we will see an estimated two hundred and thirty-seven thousand visitors come through the doors of the Judicial Center, the Historic Courthouse, and Administration Building. You can see the numbers there, and, um, those numbers were compiled, compiled for us by the Newton County Sheriff's Office. And, uh, our folks are visiting for all sorts of reasons. Uh, from hang tags to car tags, inspections, permits, they're registering to vote, uh, attending meetings. Uh, some of them are volunteers that serve on our many different boards. All of those things are happening in our facilities. And that's why, um, our goal is to keep them safe, keep them clean, comfortable, and functional, not only for our citizens, but citizens, but for our employees who call those places home every day. The next department I like to highlight is Newton County Extension Services. You've heard from these great folks tonight. Uh, as Ms. Hamp said, um, the admin building tower is lit green this week. And then later on, uh, after this week, we will light it in purple for domestic violence and pink as well for breast cancer awareness. Um, but, uh, focusing on the extension service, um, we're kind of unique. We have a partnership with the University of Georgia, the State of Georgia, and the U.S. Department of Agriculture. And, uh, they offer all kind of educational programs in their office in the areas of horticulture, agriculture, food safety. As a matter of fact, I was part of a conversation, uh, this week about how to decorate with food. And, uh, it was very interesting. Um, they also do nutrition leadership and citizenship for our youth. Another department that is on our team is the Newton County Environmental Services. They're located on the third floor of the admin building. And, uh, they offer all kind of services at this location, like foodborne illness investigations. They do permit and inspection on body artists and body art shops or studios. They regulate food service establishments. They do restaurant inspections. They permit food service establishment. They do client consultation for determining the feasibility of septic system use. Um, they do site evaluations for those septic tank placements. They permit and inspect the septic, um, systems and their construction. They certify those systems as well. And, uh, they also go out and do complaint investigations, uh, on septic systems. They also inspect all of our hotels, motels, bed and breakfasts, and ends. And we appreciate all that they do to keep us safe and, uh, protect us, um, through the services that they provide. Next up is the Newton County Court Services. I serve as a liaison, uh, with the court services. They're located in the Judicial Center. Offices like our juvenile court, probate court, magistrate court, superior court offices and their courtrooms are all located in the Judicial Center. Um, the district attorney's office and our clerk of courts is also located in that facility. And then we also didn't want to forget about our public defender's office. They are located off-site at eleven sixty Pace Street. And, um, this year again, we'll see roughly a hundred and four thousand people come through the doors of the Judicial Center. And they'll be, um, doing, uh, business, uh, in civil and criminal cases. Um, they'll be buying marriage license and firearms permits. Uh, our vital records are stored in this facility, both birth and death certificates, passports, notary applications. Uh, you might have to serve on jury duty at this site. And then you can also search property deeds and plots there. So it's a very busy place. And then lastly, uh, but certainly not least, um, uh, I will act, uh, as a liaison between our city and state offices. Um, we have six cities that we deal with on a very regular basis. City of Covington, Oxford, Portedale, Matsville, New Bern, and Social Circle. And, uh, also, uh, of note, we have some other state offices and agencies that are located in county facilities. And, uh, I thought you might be interested to know that over at Cousins, we house the Department of Driver Services, uh, the Department of Juvenile Justice, and then the Newton County Community Partnership are all located there. Um, uh, over on Hazel Brand Road is our health, uh, center, and they offer both physical and mental health services there. We have a small natural resource conservation office located inside our GIS office. Um, they're good folks there. And then, uh, lastly, we have a drug and veterans court that is actually located on the third floor of this building. So you can see that the government relation workforce team touches a lot of different offices and agencies. And again, our goal is just to continue to work with them to meet the needs of our citizens. And if you don't have any questions for me, I'm going to turn it back over, uh, to the chairman. Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. Excuse me. Uh, first of all, I, I think that was a very good report, Reverend. I think you did extremely well, and we, you were very appreciative, appreciative for that report. And what I wanted to ask, and I was, uh, well, first of all, I had two, had two main questions. First question was, and since I hadn't heard, is anything wrong with Mr. Cooper? I mean, typically.
No, he, there's not anything wrong with him. Uh, uh, he is at a training.
Okay.
He's at a, a county, uh, manager training in Austin, Texas.
Okay. Woo, man, he's, he's having a good time. Yeah. Okay. And the second was, and this is, this is more to, um, of what we had talked about at one meeting when, um, Mr. James Brown from our water, uh, resource, uh, over, over at, uh, Al Covey. And it was about a report, because I told him I had a report, a, I think he, when, when he was here. Uh, I had thirty-year reports that in thirty years that the Newton County water supply was going to be at capacity. And I relayed that information that I had to him. And he told me there was an old report that I had received and said that the capacity would be in, in year twenty fifty. And so I asked for that report along with the summary, so that I could look at it and, and make, you know, and see what, what was reported. I didn't get the report. I need that report because, uh, if, if there's going to be a capacity in twenty fifty to twenty thirty, I think that we should be proactive rather than reactive in for addressing that particular problem. So, um, uh, I guess, Mr. Chairman and, and Ms. Jackie, could y'all pursue that report for me, please? Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Um, Commissioner Sanders?
Yes, ma'am. I am former resident. While we were in the elevator, I was going to mention this. The back door is supposed to be for those who have disabilities and so forth to be able to get in the building. They're having issues in regards to getting in this building to come to the meeting. So they have to climb the stairs or get on the elevator and so forth. But, um, I'll climb the stairs to get to the area from the front door. They cannot use the back door. So can we put something in place? I know the county manager is not here, but our acting county manager at the moment. We need something put in place for those who have disabilities who cannot walk up the front stairs to get into this building. Nobody's answering the doorbell.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Uh, next on the agenda is, let's see, um, item number nine, the consent agenda. I seek a motion that we approve, please. It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner, uh, Mason. All in favor? It passes five oh, I mean, four oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Hamp?
Mr. Chair, the next item we have on the agenda for discussion and consideration is item number ten, presented by our sheriff, Mr. Ezell Brown, and Budget Director, um, Sir Rubin. Sheriff's Office is requesting approval for a budget amendment to use the remaining thirty-two thousand plus from fiscal year twenty-three, um, SRL budget to support the various needs of the Sheriff's Office, funding source, but Board of Education, um, for fiscal year twenty-three for a school resource officer budget. The amount is thirty-two thousand, six fourteen and fifty cents.
Thank you.
Is our sheriff? Yes, thank you.
Chairman Baines and those of you who make up this body tonight, Ms. Jackey, always good to see you. This is, uh, Finance Director, uh, Rubin, Pampello. We are here tonight for a simple fix. Um, as stated earlier, there's a contract, uh, between the Board of Ed and the Office of Sheriff. And basically, the Newton County Finance is only a pass-through for the Office of Sheriff. And after fulfilling our responsibilities and determine the contract, there was funds that was left over. And therefore, we request those funds to be placed in a line item so that we can use those funds for our needs there at the Sheriff's Office. We've already set, established a precedent, uh, some time ago, and we'll just back tonight. And I guess I would ask the chairman or someone here who's a lot smarter than I am, is this a necessity of each time, or is this something that we can put in a rule where there's an outside contract, uh, where there's funding from another source, uh, to keep from wasting your time? Is there something that we can put in place that the two directors of finance can get together at the closing of that budget cycle?
Correct procedure, right? It's correct procedure, right? Yes. Okay. You want to state it?
As of right now, it is, um, appropriate procedure for you to come in front of the board to make the request. Of course, this board has the, um, authority to make any changes in the future if y'all wish to do so.
But you seeking a motion for approval, though, right now?
Seeking a motion for approval, but I just thought I'd just lay it out since I was here and just to avoid, uh, your time being wasted.
Um, Commissioner Mason, I mean, uh, Commissioner Henderson, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Um, this is a question, uh, that I have. Is that I, I, you know, I remember just, I think just about every year, this time every year, that the, the Office of Sheriff had to come before us just to, uh, access surplus money that the Board of Education pays, I guess, for their resource officers who are also deputy. Other words, they're paying for additional deputies for us as needed for Newton County. And there shouldn't be no reason why, uh, Sheriff Brown, or the Office of Sheriff, should have to come before this board every, once a year for excess funds. It should be automatically transferred, uh, given, put back in his account, however you want to do it. And so that we won't be, we're with a housekeeping measure as far as, uh, funds being, you know, uh, for him, as far as him having to come before the board and ask for those particular funds. So, um, I don't think, unless it's some, uh, legal reason, that we should, would a mo- would a motion be appropriate if the boards would, uh, approve it, that those excess funds, um, not come before the Board of Commissions, that the sheriff have access to those particular funds? And I guess I'm asking for legal.
So that would have to come in form of a, um, ordinance, so that we can change our, uh, code of ordinances in the, the budget regulations.
So we, there, where, where, I mean, since we on this particular topic, where in the ordinance does it state that? Because to the best of my knowledge, it just come before, it comes up as a housekeeping measure, and it come before the board and say, I would like those additional funding. And who, who has the ordinance in, in, uh, can I get a copy?
So guys, let's make sure we stay on, on the right test. Let's get a motion on the floor first, and then you can discuss, you can discuss it. I need to discuss it. So we can get a motion.
I, I guess, and I, I'm, I'm asking this, uh, from counsel. All that.
So let's get a motion on the floor, so we can open it up for discussion. No, it's an, it's an all procedures. You have to open it up. You have to get a motion on the floor.
We're, we're so moved it is, um, stated by the chair.
Thank you, sir. Can I get a second? Now, Commissioner Henderson, go ahead and finish up.
I think we have, the word "thank" is not really the right word. I know that the Office of Sheriff has more stuff to do than come here, um, once a year and talk about excess funds. There's from, from a contract that he has with the school system. There should be no reason that he should have to come here. Those funds should be automatically made available for him to use as he see fit for the Office of Sheriff. And while, you know, so, why can't we make a motion? And once again, I'm getting back to legal, to go ahead and authorize him to do so.
Because it's a budgetary item, um, I would feel more comfortable if we followed state law and went through the proper hearing procedures. But that is something we can look into if it's, uh, if the entire board or if three members of the commissioners wants us to look at it. We can definitely look into it and propose something to the commissioners.
So do we need another motion to put on, I guess, the, uh, agenda as soon as possible so we can address that particular issue?
If you get three members, she just said if you get three members of the board that would like to put it on there, you can.
We, we made a motion for a discussion. We, we in the discussion, so.
It's for discussion. It's for discussion. Go ahead. It's for discussion.
Yeah, so we, we're trying to make sure that we don't find, find ourselves in the same situation at least every year. So.
It, it will, hey, they got one minute, and we're going to go into zoning. So if you want to do that, if you want to keep the sheriff here all night, you can. It's your call.
Well, I guess, I guess the motion is to approve, I guess.
You, any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It passed three one, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Applewhite, it's approximately seven twenty-nine. We're getting ready to go into our zoning hearing tonight. If you would, please come on up. You doing all right tonight?
I am, thank you, chairman.
Guys, I want to ask if you, if you're not speaking, please, um, turn your mics off. Thanks. It's approximately seven thirty. You can begin.
Thank you, chairman. Good evening, chairman and board. So our first petition this evening is FLU twenty-three dash zero 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 five. This is a flume amendment, um, to go to development node located at Highway two seventy-eight and one forty-two. And today, the applicant is actually putting a request for the board to table this petition for sixty days.
So move.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
It's a motion by Commissioner Mason and second by Commissioner, um, Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes. Commissioner, your favor?
Yes, sir.
It passes four oh. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Our chairman, our next petition this evening is a conditional use permit. This is case number CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 five. It is a, for a proposed luxury recreational campground. The existing zoning right now is agricultural residential, and our future land use is rural residential and parks, recreation, conservation. This is in the South River watershed. It is located at five-five-two Island Shoals Road, five-five-two B Island Shoals Road and Island Shoals Road. So there's approximately three lots that are down there. The approximate road forentage is three hundred and twenty feet, um, on the west side of Island Shoals Road. The parcels, the tot-, the three parcels total a hundred acres, so they're each ninety-eight acres and then one acre and one acre. And the tax ID numbers are zero zero three-three dash zero one-six, zero zero three-three dash zero one-eight, zero zero three-three dash zero one-nine. It is in the emerging suburban character area in Commissioner District One. Current owner is Ronald Story and Stephanie Story-Sachs. And our petitioner and the representative today is Dale Almer. An applicant's intent, as stated earlier, is to locate a luxury campground with no more than twenty cabins. And again, the parcel is three acres total, uh, three parcels of total of a hundred acres. There is currently a home on the property that is no longer in use. And since the owner's relocated and the electricity has been disconnected, there's also an older home on the property that was built in the nineteen twenties, but it's currently not habitable at this time. And the property abuts the Yellow River in the rear and has two lakes on it. And just a brief history, on seven twenty-five, twenty twenty-three, the planning commission tabled this petition so that the applicant could provide additional information. And then on nine twenty-six, twenty twenty-three, the planing commission voted, I'm sorry, they voted to approve this petition. Please excuse that error. This was recommended for approval by the planning commission. And then we have, uh, definitions here for the campground. I'm not gonna read through that. It is included in all of your packets. And this is the applicable area for it as well. So in conclusion, the petitioner is proposing to have a twenty cabin luxury campground on approximately one hundred acres. This will be a low-density development and with outdoor activities such as hiking trails, kayaking and fishing. And the cabins will be approximately two hundred to four hundred square feet. The applicant will provide adequate parking and refuse areas to be approved by the county. So this use meets the standards set forth in section five-ten dash one-four-zero for campground, recreational vehicle RV park, private. It should be approved. Staff recommends that should the Board of Commissioners approve the conditional use request to allow the luxury campground, that the approval will be with the following recommended conditions. So should a petition be approved by the board? It should be approved for a conditional use permit for a luxury campground, subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, the maximum number of cabins allowed will be twenty. Two, amenities will include nature or hiking trails, fishing, camping and kayaking. Number three, an adequate refuse area will be provided for the campground. Four, road improvements, as required by the transportation engineer, must be completed. Five, trails leading to each cabin shall be wide enough to allow fire and emergency vehicle access. Six, the campground shall maintain a hundred feet on disturbed perimeter buffer. Seven, the entire campground shall remain under a single ownership. At no time shall the parcel be subdivided and the cabins sold to individual owners. Eight, all outdoor activities must cease at eleven PM. And nine, prior to any permits being issued, all plans shall be approved by Development Services, the Transportation Engineer and Fire Marshal. Approvals must also be obtained from external agencies such as the Water Authority, Environmental Health and Georgia Soil and Water Commission as needed. This is the location of the property on Island Shoals Road, so you have the larger property, ninety-eight acres, and then the two one-acre lots. Currently zoned agricultural residential. The flume is rural residential, and then along at the back where the Yellow River is, it is, uh, PRC, Parks Rec and Conservation, the green area. South River watershed and in Commissioner District One. This is a conceptual site layout showing the proposed location of the cabins, little red This is, uh, proposed location of the side trails, the walking trails they're looking to put in. This is a zoning site plan showing different areas, the lakes, the water, um, the river and trails. And these are just examples that they have provided of what the cabins are gonna look like. Some of them we know have the A-frame, um, others would have different shapes, but they're gonna generally be about two hundred to four hundred square feet. And this is just not an example of, uh, what applicant has provided. And then we have these three. And again, this was recommended for approval by the planning commission. Are there any questions for staff? If not, chairman, the applicant is here.
Thank you so much. We're gonna open up our public hearing tonight. This is an opportunity that we let the applicant and those that want, would like to speak in favor tonight, um, to come at this time, please state your name, your address, please. The applicant and those that would, would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners. Good evening to the public gallery. As stated, we're looking to develop, um, a luxury campground in line with the rural agricultural feel of the area. It's low density. The development that we're doing has minimal impact, largely site-assembled. We have been in, um, discussions with the fire marshal who has given us indications on improvements that need to be made to allow fire trucks access and turnaround. We've also, um, spoken to, uh, the, the health department in terms of need for septic tanks. Uh, again, very, very low density, five units, two people per cabin, um, on a roughly a hundred acres. The purpose would be to provide people with access to outdoor activities, hiking, fishing, uh, camping. We're not looking to put in televisions or entertainment facilities on the cabin, so noise pollution, et cetera, will be at a minimum. Also, we would like to work with local businesses to support the local economy. We're not gonna open up a restaurant or anything like that. We will be working with local providers. Um, that is, that's it from my side. If there are any questions, either from, from the board or from.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Is there any, anyone else that would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. Um, you may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. That portion of our public hearing is closed. I think this is in District, um, One.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve conditional use permit twenty-three dash zero 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 five, with staff recommendations. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Uh, it's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Ms., Ms. Applewhite, so there's, to meet the conditions of a camp, campground, they had to have one, at least one site, right? Is that, is, is, is one site, one site without a structure on it, is that, is that still the, is that still the case? Or was it ever the case?
The permits for the campground. So I have them in here. So this is kind of intermingled with, like, the RV campground as well, but this would be more of, um, not for, like, the RVs and mobile vehicles. This would be more for side build, for lack of a better word, structures that would be on slabs. So they are allowed to have the various cabins there, which is why we have the conditional use permit for the board to consider if this is a use that we would like in the county.
And, thank you. And if, if this property is ever sold, it reverts back to its agricultural and agricultural resi-, residential zoning, is that correct? Or it, it reverts back to those stipulations, is that correct?
If this you, if this use is discontinued, it doesn't, the use doesn't stay with the land. It moves on with the business. So if they discontinue with the good, cease to exist. And the land is currently zoned AR, it will remain that.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
The permit is just for the campground use while it's there.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, chairman. Our, uh, next report, our next petition this evening is rezoning. It is a companion case. It's REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 six. And the companion case to that is REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 seven. And this is a rezoning to be able to locate, uh, warehouse, a couple of warehouses on these properties. The applicant has requested of the board to table the petition for sixty days so that they can meet with the community to discuss concerns that were raised at the planning commission meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny the tabling of rezoning two-three dash zero 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 six.
Second.
It's, it's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason that we denied it, the request to table this. Um, any discussion? Um, Commissioner Sanders.
I would just like to hear from my colleague on the reason of denial. We, we, I just would like to understand what was the reason of denial. That's all.
I'd rather, I'd rather not say. I just motioned to deny, to deny.
I just wanted to know what I was voting for.
Um, Commissioner Henderson.
Uh, what's the, uh, what was the, uh, planning commission recommendation?
The planning commission recommended denial for both this case and the companion case after it.
Let's not tie, let's, let's do one case at a time.
Okay.
Yeah.
It, it was just that, I mean, for the nod for a reason, I missed. Did you say a reason?
They did not.
So can you, so, can you, can you tell the process if, if it's denied? Can you go ahead and tell the process? We will open it up for discussion. That way you, yeah, we'll go through, yeah, we'll go through the public hearing. That way you, you will hear all the stuff that you wanna hear. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
And the reason why I'm abstaining is because I wanted more understanding of why we are denying. That's why I was asking my colleague to give, fill me in, cause I, I, this is District One, correct? And that's why I was trying to get more information. I believe in voting on accuracy and information, so that's why I was trying to find out more information.
Commissioner Henderson.
What, what, what tip, tip the planning commission always kind of gives a, a reason as far as the reason why they were, uh, denying it? And so I just have enough information to make a, um, informed decision as, as far as voting against.
So what, what, what was your vote? Both of both did? Okay.
Reason, and they stated in the minutes the reason why you, uh, you, uh, had to do the extension.
Okay, so it's two-two, um, two-four, two abstaining, so I break the tie, um, so we can hear, cause that's a tie, right? Two and two is a tie, right? Yeah. Thank you. I break the tie. I vote for the, um, I vote for the denial. That way the commissioners can get a chance to hear what they was wanting to hear. Thank you.
Thank you, chairman. Um, so our first, the first case of the two today, it's REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 six. And again, the companion case is REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 seven. The existing land use map is a development node. The existing zoning is agricultural. The proposed zoning tonight is light industrial M-one. This is located in the Little River watershed. The current location is one-three-seven-three-nine.
Hold on for a quick second. Y'all go ahead. Y'all go ahead, go ahead. I know this is important, cause I know the commissioners want to get this information. That's why they abstained, so I'm gonna let you, go ahead. Thank you.
Current location is one-three-seven-three-nine, Highway two seventy-eight. Map and parcel number is zero-one-two-four dash zero-one-one. The character area for this parcel is industrial, heavy commercial. Total size is seven point six acres and it's in the Commissioner District One. Current owner is Margaret Coons Living Trust, and our petitioner and representative today is Greg Osborne. And on history, on nine twenty-six, the planning commission recommended denial of this project by a vote of four zero. The applicant's intent is to rezone seven point zero six acres from A agricultural to M-one light industrial in order to locate the Newton County Logistics Center, uh, which is industrial warehouse. And again, the site is seven point six acres. It's located at the corner of Highway two seventy-eight and Social Circle Road. There is currently a house and barn on the property. And the property adjacent to, it's, it's adjacent agricultural and residential zoning. And then there's a church opposite it on, across Social Circle Road. And a site plan that I was submitting in August thirty to staff, it proposes two warehouses to be located on the property. The northernmost building is going to be five hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred square feet, and the southernmost building, three hundred and forty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty square feet. They're proposing to have five hundred and thirty-eight regular parking spaces and two hundred and forty-one trailer parking spaces. The plan also proposes two site entrances, one on Highway two seventy-eight and the other along Social Circle Road. It will, it also includes, you know, the stormwater ponds to handle the runoff, um, and, you know, proposes all the setbacks that are required. In terms of land use and density, the applicant is proposing to use the land for distribution warehouse. And the proposed use reflects the development node designation on the land use plan, and it is consistent, you know, with applicant's request. Given the existing zoning and development in the area, the proposed zoning may be appropriate for this area. The owner has provided a preliminary site plan that meets the minimum requirements for an industrial warehouse. G dot approval is still required for an access point off of Highway two seventy-eight. So the, because of the scale of this project, it met the requirements for a development of regional impact, which is, it goes to the state and to the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission. They complete a review and they release a report, and this is a summary, um, of their report. And one of the things they looked at was their regional plan compatibility, to see if this project is compatible with that. And they had the following recommendations with, for these six criteria that they have. So in regards to enhances economic mobility and competitiveness, um, applicant stated that the regional workforce is sufficient to fill the demand created for the proposed project. In terms of if it elevates public health and equity, Northeast Georgia found that the proposed development would leave open green space surrounding both warehouses, and they recommended that they use it as an amenity area for their employees. In terms of it supports and adds value to existing communities, the regional commission found that due to their nature, the proposed warehouse does little to add to the character of the area beyond providing additional jobs within the county. In terms of creating housing that is diverse, adequate, equitable and affordable, the proposed development does not include any housing, and the county should be cognizant of whether there is adequate housing around the development to provide, to provide affordable housing for any potential employees. And their fifth criteria, which includes transportation choices and if it's well-connected with existing and planned transportation options. And the regional commission found, um, that the proposed development is in an industrial and auto-centric area of Newton County, and that there are few residential or commercial land uses surrounding, in the surrounding areas. Therefore, there's limited need for pedestrian or bicycle infrastructure. And the final criteria that they had was projects, natural and historic resources. And they said that the proposed development would be located directly east of Nelson Creek. And the creek's hundred-year FEMA flood boundary overlaps with the site's seventy-five-foot transitional buffer near building number one. And they're recommended retaining a forested buffer along the side of the site closest to the Nelson Creek is encouraged, as this buffer would serve to improve the site's flood resilience, reduce erosion and buffer noise from I twenty. And on site for the benefit of the surrounding residential areas. So those are some. So those are some of the comments that they had. Um, they also further added in their report, um, potential into jurisdictional impacts. And here, the applicant stated in the, in their reports that the project would likely affect water supply watersheds as the proposed project would be in the Little River watershed, which is one of our protected watersheds. Um, the applicant states that the flood plain, river, and wetlands do not fall on the property and are approximately five hundred feet west of the property. In regards to stormwater, they have provided, um, they've estimated that forty-nine point nine percent of the site will be covered in impervious surfaces, uh, which will cater for stormwater management runoff. Um, the applicant has stated there are no hazardous wastes would be generated. And the regional commission has recommended the proposal should be designed to minimize disruption to the existing streams, associated wetlands, and flood plains to avoid future erosion, flooding, and degraded water quality on-site and downstream from the site. We also had preliminary comments back from our Public Works Department. Uh, the transition directors indicated that the proposed warehouse development will be required to limit all access points to State Road twelve, which is a Highway two seventy-eight. Or they would have to upgrade Social Circle Road and the Social Circle Road intersection with State Road twelve to current county and G dot standards. Um, required roadway upgrades would include a minimum sixty-foot right-of-way, twelve-inch lanes with paved shoulders and turning lanes at the intersection of Social Circle and State Road twelve. The, um, applicant provided a traffic study and such a summary. It was done by A and R Engineering, Inc. And the study projects that there will be one thousand four hundred and eleven new daily trips, including a hundred and twenty-eight morning peak hour trips and a hundred and thirty-one afternoon peak hour trips from the proposed development. And the traffic study recommends that a right turn lane and a left turn lane be added along U S two seventy-eight for traffic entering the site. Character areas. So the entire proposed development is located in two character areas, industrial, heavy, commercial, and the live-work character area. This particular parcel, this is the southernmost parcel, seven point six acres, is located in the industrial, heavy, commercial, character area, which would support this kind of zoning. The adjacent lot above it to the north, um, happens to lie in both, and we'll look at that when we do the companion case. So in conclusion, the proposed development is a warehouse distribution center located on Highway two seventy-eight and Social Circle Road. The project is to be located on this parcel and the adjacent parcel to the north, which we will discuss in the companion case. The character area of industrial, heavy, commercial, and the flume of development node would both support a rezoning to M one for this parcel. However, the project, the proposed project is also located in the Little River Protected Watershed, which requires conditional use permits for certain uses per section four two zero dash zero three zero. The Northeast Georgia Regional Commission stated in its report that there is potential for the watershed to be affected by this type of development. They also identified areas in their regional plan which the use is not compatible with. An applicant has not acquired preliminary approval from G dot at this time for the Highway two seventy-eight access point. And the Transportation Department has identified significant improvements that are needed on the Social Circle Road access point. So while the proposed industrial use is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan and the future land use map, consideration should also be given to the potential effects on the Little River watershed, compatibility with the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission's regional plan, and other external agencies' approval that would still be required for this development. Recommended conditions: Should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for rezoning to M one light industrial for an industrial warehouse or logistics center, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use to the following: A, complete a minor plat combination with the adjacent lot, map and parcel zero one two four zero one one, on a companion case, R E Z twenty-three dash zero 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 seven. B, applicant must provide compliance with all required setbacks. C, the owner shall meet all requirements of Newton County ordinances prior to any permits being issued. D, the owner applicant shall obtain approvals from Development Services, Public Works, the Fire Marshal, and external agencies such as G dot, the Water Authority, Georgia Soil and Water, prior to any permits being issued. E, the proposed warehouse development will be required to limit all access points to State Road twelve or to upgrade Social Circle Road and the Social Circle Road intersection with State Road twelve to current county or G dot standards. Required roadway upgrades include, but are not necessarily limited to that, a sixty-foot minimum right-of-way, twelve-inch lanes, and paved shoulders and turning lanes at the intersections of Social Circle Road and State Road twelve. And F, restrict the use to industrial warehouse purposes. G, no outside storage of warehouse products or items. And H, obtain a conditional use permit for the Little River watershed for the following uses as applicable. So one, industries or businesses that distribute or warehouse hazardous material. Two, uses that provide for the sale of fuel for motor vehicles. Three, confined animal feeding operations. Four, landfills or wastewater disposal facilities of any kind except for septic tanks approved by Environmental Health. Five, on-the-ground or above-ground fuel or chemical storage tanks. Six, the manufacture of chemicals and allied products, dairy products, fats and oils, leather tanning, meat, fish, and poultry, poultry packing, paper and allied products, petroleum and related industries, primary metal, rubber, and plastics or concrete products. Seven, junkyards and auto wrecking facilities. Eight, bulk storage of petroleum. Nine, truck terminals. Ten, railroad terminals, classification yards, or intermodal freight terminals. Eleven, auto and truck sales and rental and repair shops. And twelve, auto and truck washes, primary, and accessory. So this is the location of the southernmost parcel, which is right at the corner of, uh, Highway two seventy-eight and Social Circle Road. Currently zoned A agricultural. It is in a development node, flume, Little River watershed, District One, Commissioner District One. And, uh, it's in the industrial, heavy, commercial, character area. This is the survey that was provided by the applicant for the southern parcel. This was the original concept plan that was submitted, but the applicant has since, um, submitted an updated plan, which is this one here. So this is the most recent updated site plan of what the applicant is proposing. And if there are no other, uh, questions, the applicant does have a few slides he would like to share with you.
I'm sorry, say it again.
If there are no other questions for staff, the applicant is here and he has a few slides he would like to share with the board.
Thank you. I'm gonna take this opportunity now to open it up for our public hearing tonight. Um, the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight, you may come at this time. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name and your address for the record, please.
How do I change them? Good evening, Commissioners, all attendees. My name is Greg Osborne. I am managing partner of Longleaf Commercial Properties. Um, this is our area with our site. Um, you, you can see our site in blue on the overhead. Um, you can also see that, um, if I can make this thing work. You see that Facebook is about, is less than a mile from our site and that Rivian is nine tenths of a mile from our site. Next slide, please. I guess that's me. This is the, um, land use plan, the Newton County land use plan. You can see everything in purple is, uh, industrial, heavy, commercial. If you can see the, um, indication, that, thank you, Gina, industrial, heavy, commercial, uh, except for this green part at the top of our site that is, uh, live-work-play corridor. This is really not very practical. Uh, it's too close to I twenty. And the blue dotted line represents a massive Georgia power transmission line. I'd like you to also understand that the, the boundary between the purple and the, the, um, beige color is Nelson Creek. Nelson Creek has a one hundred foot wide forested buffer on each side. So that's two hundred and, two hundred feet in total plus the width of the creek. This is our site plan. As you can see, the, um, the truck docks are internal to our site for both buildings. Building one hundred has a truck dock that faces I twenty. Again, our western border is Nelson Creek with two hundred feet of forested buffer. We plan to install an evergreen screen along Social Circle Road and a portion of Highway two seventy-eight that will consist of evergreen trees that will grow to the height of forty to sixty feet. Economic impact, five hundred to seven hundred jobs, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to one million dollars in property taxes. Some of the members of the public have been concerned this will raise a property tax that has no merit. In fact, this will lessen pressure to increase residential property taxes because it will increase the tax base for the county. And clearly, an industrial building is not a comparable for a single-family home. As far as traffic is considered, we did a seventy, we hired a, a consultant, a seventy-six-page, um, report, including cameras all along our site to document existing traffic. It was, the report concluded that our site was suitable for the use, traffic-wise and density, with improvements to, uh, Highway two seventy-eight. And, uh, this report was submitted to the North, uh, the Northeast Georgia Regional Commission, which produces a report, or D R I. The D R I conclusion was the site was suitable for our use, including traffic and density. Some of the numbers that you saw in the report, um, on trip, numbers of trips, I want to clarify, a trip is in and out, so you have to divide these numbers by two. Okay, so in the peak hour, we have nine trucks coming into our site, eight trucks leaving. In the P M peak hour, we have fourteen trucks coming into our site and twelve leaving. So the vast majority of the numbers that you're seeing are automobiles, not trucks. So I want to make that clarification. As far as the staff report goes, I'd like to make a couple of comments. We agree with all of the conditions. Um, and with a few exceptions, we've asked that the no outside storage be changed to a maximum of twenty-five percent for each truck dock. Remember, the truck docks are interior to our site. They cannot be seen from the perimeter. And, uh, the second thing is we ask that light manufacturing be added to a conditional use permit. A few other points I think are, have merit in, in terms of the staff report. The, the seven point six acre site is listed as currently zoned as agr- agricultural. That's not true. It's, it's, it's currently zoned as residential. The larger tract, eighty-three acres, is, in the staff report, is, is, um, noted as residential. It's currently zoned as agricultural. Um, this is an assemblage. Instead of two parcels that have been presented in the report and, in the planning commission hearing, there are actually three. We discovered a third parcel that was not known in Newton County or the Tax Assessor's Office or the man that owned it. It's landlocked between the other two parcels. It's owned by Earl Bars. It's one point one acres. And it is zoned agricultural. We submitted an application for rezoning for that third parcel. It has been ignored in the report. It hasn't been ignored in the, in the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone want to oppose tonight? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Thank you. My name is Dave Norton. I live at four three five seven, Highway one forty-two, newborn, Georgia. The petitioner said last week at the planning and zoning meeting, he'd, he said, and held up his sign, beautiful building, he said, "They're not warehouses. They're distribution centers." Well, you know, the trucks that, uh, go around and pump out septic tanks and outhouses? They call them honeywagons. It doesn't change the smell. It still stinks up the whole neighborhood. If you want to know what's to come with these warehouses, and this is just the first one, right I twenty, going through Conyers, and look at all the warehouses that's going up right there on I twenty. Is that what we want Newton County to look like when people come through? Longleaf Properties just had buildings approved in the city limits of Social Circle by the Social Circle City Council on the bypass, right there where Stan Ridge Color is, if you're familiar with the area. If you look at the maps, it shows Social Circle Road crossing I twenty, and that's where the maps start in here. That's where they stop. If you go on out Social Circle Road, you'll come up on Highway eleven within sight of where the bypass starts. So if the trucks want to go from one warehouse to the next or distribution center from one to the next for Longleaf Properties, they can go the roundabout, through the roundabouts on two seventy-eight, up by the truck center that hasn't been built yet to get there, or they can go out two seventy-eight the other way, across the interstate and get there that way. But if there's traffic and a truck driver, he's gonna beat the traffic. He's gonna save his gas. A sign will not stop him. He's gonna go Social Circle Road through a residential district, through, like a man said last week, kids' kids' play on that street. That's residential street. It may be zoned industrial, but there's quite a few families there. There's several fairly new houses on that road. If you see item three on page five. Let me find that. Give me one second. It talks, and he spoke on it a minute ago about the daily trips in and out. There's still trucks. They're still big. And it's just an increase on what's already there and what's gonna come. Like I said, this is just the, just the first one. So if there's more, then there's even more trucks. If you come up thirty-six from the south side into the city of Covington, there is this, one of them pull behind temporary signs and it's flashing no trucks through town. Well, if it's good enough for the city of Covington, why isn't it good enough for you and I? He stated on, uh, just a few minutes ago about the benefit of the increase in the tax base. You've seen this type of growth in other counties around us. How many of those counties have decreased the tax rate for their, property tax rate for their citizens? Where is our benefit? Pay close attention to the Public Works comments regarding road improvements and the items in adding value to existing communities on page four. Where is our added value? Personally, I have no problem with someone making a profit on their investment. It's the American way. It's their right. We all want to do that on our investments. But there's a big difference. They have a few dollars, maybe if more than a few dollars. They have dollars invested. We have our whole lives invested in these homes, in this area. We've been here a while, some longer than others. I have one more, one more. Okay, I had something else too, but I'm just going to go to this and end it so other people can speak. Newton County was pitched to me as God's country years ago by my coworkers. I've never heard anyone refer to Fulton Industrial, Lawrenceville, or even LA and California as God's country. Covington has claimed the nickname of Hollywood in the South. I ask you, please do not make us LA of the South. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Kim Shear. I live at sixty Quail Valley Road in Social Circle. This was not on my agenda to actually speak about this. In fact, I had no idea that it was even coming up. Um, but I did want to speak in terms of what I did not hear from the applicant was the light pollution that this could occur in our area of the town. Right now, you can see all the stars at night. And the more that this area develops, the less that we can see. I also question the watershed impact that it's going to have because we've already seen that from development that is there. I also question the validity of the number of jobs that he mentioned that this would, um, bring in. Five to seven hundred jobs is a lot of jobs for something that is just a distribution center. Um, in terms of it being a distribution center or a warehouse, um, I've worked at a distribution center and the, the traffic is immense. And it's not nine trucks a day, it's a lot of trucks a day. And in terms of this facility and the way it looks, my husband works at one of these facilities in Conyers. And I can tell you, it's beautiful, but it still has a detriment to the surrounding area that it's in, to its residents, and also to the other commercials, um, retailers that are in that area. So I would strongly suggest that you vote this down.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll make this quick. My name is Bob Mulvahill. I live on eight seven eight Social Circle Road, right where those trucks will be coming through. Just real quickly, we have approximately fourteen residences on that Social Circle Road. When I first moved there, it was a dirt road. It is now a paved road, and it's hard for cars to get by each other. More or less roughly a thousand trucks, or I don't know what his number was, coming in and out. But there are children on this street, there are people that have lived here. We will be severely impacted by trucks coming up and down that road. And, um, I just, um, I'm using the same arguments I used with the planning commission who deemed, in their wisdom, a four-zero denial. Um, so I'm hoping you stay with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Michael Downton. I live on Social Circle Road. Um, there are, there are two particular houses that live on curves. I, I know you guys may not, but I am one of those guys that live on the curve. And when there's been accidents or shutdowns on twenty and traffic starts coming down Social Circle Road, I've almost been hit several times. These people increase the traffic of having seven hundred employees coming up and down our road. That is going to be tremendous. You just approve somebody to have a cabin so they can have hiking trails and horses walking up. This is what we have on our road. This is our sanctuary. And you put this distribution on our road, it's going to take that away from us. Um, our road gets paved maybe once every five to ten years. There's a pothole that comes up constantly, the same spot. Put seven hundred to five hundred cars up and down that road, that attention's going to need to be there. Uh, and it's just not. All right, that's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Guys, we have a minute and thirty-three seconds left.
My name's Ron Downton. I live at nine forty-three Social Circle Road. Uh, I moved here fifty years ago and built my home for, uh, out of Atlanta. I wanted my children to be raised safely and they ride up and down that road. My boys have now grown up, they have kids, they built a house next to us. This is going to increase the traffic down the road. It's going to be unsafe for our kids. Uh, they didn't mention how many trucks would be actually parked in that parking lot. That trucks do leak and they add to, when the, it's rained, it's going to add to the chemicals that's put into the ground and the creek. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We got fifty-two seconds, fifty-two seconds. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
John Clemmons. I live at one five two Deep Step Road, approximately two, three miles west of this. I drive this road on a regular basis. One of the biggest issues that I want to bring out, that's always brought up, is the taxes that are brought to our county. But the taxes never get to me. My taxes have gone up for the last three years, and I expect that they will continue to go up. So this money's now going in somebody else's pocket. It's not coming into mine, it's not doing anything for me. So as far as that is concerned, that's a bunch of debunk. They need to, you really need to think about that. Taxes don't get to where they really need to get. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite, if you would, please come on up. And, I'm sorry, anyone else? We have twenty-one seconds. Anyone else? I got, come on, guys, we don't, this is a live board meeting, let's treat it like that. Thank you. Sir, please state your name, your address for the record, please.
My name is Jeff Spencer. Uh, me, me and my wife live at thirty Old Blue Point, Social Circle. I'll be really quick. Uh, all I got to say is noise pollution, we, we hear trucks all the time. When they hit their air brakes, it's horrible. It's going to be ten times that amount. Light pollution, trash, there's trash all over the streets now. Imagine wanting it to be like later. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite. No, he didn't, he didn't act for it. Sir, you didn't act for it. The rules are you have to act for it. Give it to him? Okay, we'll give it to you. Okay, sir. Come, come on up.
Clock start, please. Will you put the building up for me? I can't figure this damn thing out. The building. All right, this is a Class A logistics distribution facility. It's not a warehouse. The architect is the largest architectural firm in the world. It, your Amazon package shows up on your front porch. It stayed in that building at least one night. Okay? I've already addressed the traffic count. It's not fourteen hundred cars, it's half of that. It's nine trucks in the AM, fourteen trucks in the PM. I hope you don't let your children play in the streets. We are improving two seventy-eight by millions of dollars. There is no destination for a truck north on Social Circle Road. Trucks traveling to the east are going to be on I twenty. They'll get off on exit ninety-eight, come down two seventy-eight to our facility. Trucks traveling to the west, we'll get off one-on-one, come to two seventy-eight, come to our facility. They'll take the same rates, uh, routes out. They're not getting on Social Circle Road. We are improving Social Circle Road in accordance with the Newton County Transportation Department Director's request and requirements. Again, quite expensive. Property tax issue I've already addressed. You know, these are professional consultants on traffic, okay? They, they are professional consultants. The Northeast Georgia Regional Commission is made up of several agencies all over the state. Both said this is a suitable site for traffic and density. I understand the concerns of the public, but they don't know enough as much about traffic as these people do. The last thing that I will say is that...
Guys, listen.
Is the last thing I will say is the people that own the...
Hold on for a second, okay?
I'm sorry.
Guys, if we all will, we're going to ask you one more time. Please refrain from making outbursts. Thank you. Go ahead.
Last thing I'll say is that the people that are selling this property to me have been here for generations. They're ninety-two-year-old women. They're trying to secure their future financially. The only way they can sell their land is for an industrial use. It has no other use except for a hunting club, which is what it is right now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Um, Ms. Applewhite. The public hearing is now closed. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman. Motion to deny RE, REZ two-three-zero-zero-zero-zero-six.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second, that we denied is a second by Commissioner, um, Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders.
Thank you, Mr. C. What I heard today was, this is our sanctuary. Newton County is known as God's country. Our children play on these roads. Children, we want to raise our children in safety. Noise pollution, light pollution. Now, I know my fellow commissioners were in place when y'all placed all these warehouses in District Three. People stated the same, exact same thing, but you still went against the people and put those warehouses. Currently, right now, Lido is causing noise pollution with Iris Brook. I just reported it. They're working overtime. I just reported it. So I want the commissioners to understand that what you don't want in your district, other districts don't want either. So when you dictate what you put in other individuals' district, remember, your people don't want the same thing either. It's supposed to be one Newton. So if you're going to listen to the people, then listen to the people. Don't put certain things in certain districts that you don't want in yours.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Any, uh, let me do it again. All in favor? Any opposed? Um, can you state your reason, please?
Thank you, Ms. C. Um, you know, I just didn't get the, um, I mean, it was the argument on both sides for good, and I concur with Commissioner Sanders as far as, you know, what you may not want in the other districts, especially ones in town. And we're, and then we're always putting up a whole lot of warehouses and, and housing stuff. And it's voting, even the, um, my fellow commissioner will outvote some of the, the commissioner of that district. I just don't have enough information as, as far as, as, as what it would do, impact the community, the way that, um, their sin is going to impact the community. Yet on the other hand, when you think about the, the communities that have been impacted. So I just abstain because I just don't have enough information.
Thank you. Um, it, that passes, um, no, it fails. It fails three-one-one extension. With a motion passing, but yeah, the item failed, sir. The item failed, sir. It failed. All right, thank you.
Our chairman, our next case this evening is the companion case. It's REZ twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-seven, um, which is comprised of REZ twenty-three dash zero-zero-zero-zero-six. Existing land use map is a development node. I'm just going to go through the basics of this one here, but because it's similar to the one we just did, I'm not going to read through every single thing, unless there are questions. So the existing land use map is a development node. Um, existing zoning is our one single family. Proposed zoning is M-one light industrial. It's in the Little River watershed on Social Circle Road. And these are the two parcels, it's zero-one-two-four-zero-one-zero and one-two-four-one-zero-eight. The character area is industrial, heavy commercial, as well as the live work. And the parcel, the total acres is eighty-three point eight-five-two acres and one point one-six-zero is the other parcel. This is also in Commissioner District One. The current owner is Donald Smith Living Trust, and our petitioner is Greg Osborne, as well as our rep today. And again, it's the same intent. Um, this time it's just of eighty-five acres to build a mini warehouse. It was denied on nine twenty-six by the planning commission. And we just have the facts on the project site there, eighty-five point zero-one-two acres approximately. Site plan is the same thing, the same size of the buildings, um, five hundred and thirty-eight regular parking spaces, two hundred and forty-one trailer parking spaces. Land use and density is similar in this case here. Still requires, um, GDOT access. The findings for Northeast Georgia Regional Commission are the same for the previous parcel. It's the same for these two parcels. And again, we have the same potential into jurisdictional impacts, as well as stormwater, public works, um, preliminary comments are the same, traffic study report is the same, one thousand four hundred and eleven new daily trips. The character areas where there's a slight difference. So the entire proposed development is located in two character areas for this, for these two parcels here. Uh, industrial, heavy commercial, as well as the live work. And we'll see that in a second. And the conclusion is basic, is the same as the one I did. The only difference here is that while the proposed industrial use is consistent with the policies and intent of one character area in a comprehensive plan, as well as the future land use map, we have to give consideration to any potential on effects of the Little River watershed. We have to give consideration that part of this parcel is located in the live work character area, which does not support industrial uses. We have to consider compatibility with the Northeast Georgia's regional plan and of course, other external agencies approvals for access that will still be required. The recommended, the recommended conditions are the same. Um, I don't know if you'd like me to read it into the record, but they're the same for the compact reading, okay? So should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners? It should be approved for rezoning to M-one light industrial for industrial warehouse or logistics center, and subject to the owner's agreement, to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. And one, to the owner's agreement to restrict the use of the following, complete A minor plat combination to include the adjacent lot, which is in this case will be zero-one-two-four dash zero-one-one on the companion case. The applicant must provide compliance with all required setbacks. The owner shall meet all requirements of the Newton County ordinances prior to permits being issued. D, the owner or applicant shall obtain approvals from Development Services, Public Works, Fire Marshal, and external agencies such as GDOT, the Water Authority, and Georgia Soil and Water before any permits. E, the proposed warehouse development will be required to limit all access points to the State Road twelve, which is Highway two seventy-eight, or upgrade Social Circle Road and the Social Circle Road intersection with State Road twelve to the current county and GDOT standards. And required roadway upgrades include a minimum of sixty-foot right-of-way, twelve-inch lanes with paved shoulders, and turning lanes at the intersection of Social Circle Road and State Road twelve. And this may be amended as required by the Transportation Department. F, restrict the use industrial warehouse purposes. G, no outside storage of warehouse products. And of course, H, adjust the conditions or the uses that would require a conditional use permit because they're in the Little River watershed, and you have the twelve uses listed there. And again, so this is the, the northern parcel we're looking at. There are two parcels, as Ms. Osborne mentioned previously. This one includes the, the parcel down at the bottom there that was discovered. So the two stars will show, this is our zoning. It's our one single-family residential on this northern parcel. It's in the development node for those two parcels still. Little River watershed. This is our Commissioner District One. So this is a live, this is where this parcel is segmented by the two character areas. The green is the live work corridor, and then below that, the purple is the industrial, heavy commercial. So this is a survey showing the location of the two parcels. So this will bring the total parcels for the project up to three. What is wrong with the, okay? And this is just a close-up of that third parcel that Ms. Osborne was referring to. And then you have the southern one that we just did previously in the last petition. This is our initial concept plan that was submitted. This is the updated site plan. And if there are any, um, questions for staff? Yeah, Ms. Osborne is still here.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Um, we're going to open it up for our public hearing now. Um, the applicant and those in favor. Um, the applicant and those in favor, if you would like to speak tonight, you have ten minutes to do so. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant and those in favor, you may come at this time, sir.
Thank you. Um, forgive me, I'm a little bit of hearing impaired, so if I miss something, forgive me. I did request a sixty-day deferral for this hearing so that I would have time to have town hall meetings with the public and try to come to some common ground. I am totally in favor of compromise. We think we've done the best we could to protect the community from this development. Light pollution, noise pollution, water pollution is a non-issue considering all the agencies we have to go through these days with EPD and so forth. So, um, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if that was proposed earlier and denied. If it was, uh, that's extremely disappointing. Thank you.
Sir, are you reserving, um, your time? Are you reserving your time?
I'm reserving the time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else want to speak in favor tonight? Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Yes. Uh, my name is Scott Daniel, seventy-five, Old Hickory Lane, Oxford, Georgia. So, my family's lived here for almost forty years. Came here right out of college. I taught at Newton High School, taught chorus. My wife has been in the school system forever. She just retired, uh, principal at East Newton Elementary. I was executive director of the Arts Association for quite a few years. Um, my board was, Horace Johnson was the president, TK Adams on it. The reason I'm telling you that is I have a, a unique perspective. The last eight years, I've been in real estate and a real estate broker. I don't represent this project. I don't represent the, uh, owners of that land, but I do understand the big picture. The comprehensive plan that you guys just, uh, submitted to the state back in June clearly shows that from, basically from Facebook, all the way to Nelson Creek, as a logical way to use that land, would be possibly industrial. And you've, and you, and you were so wise to do that because otherwise we'll have warehouses everywhere potentially. And I think that's the, the fear of a lot of people here, and I understand it. I also understand, uh, back two thousand and five to right before the crash, there was enormous growth, as they talked about the west side towards Conyers. It was a lot of projects real quick, real fast, and it blew up very quickly without a lot of, uh, planning as far as traffic patterns and so forth. And so, that's what this community is afraid of. They're afraid with any growth on the By Rivian, all of that out there, that it's just going to become a guenette, where it's gridlock traffic all the time, and it's just, you know, chaos. This is not that. Because of the comprehensive plan that you guys put forth, you've got, you've organized the whole community in a very logical way with the character areas. And if, if you don't see a project like that in this spot, down the road, when everybody that's out here now is not here, there's a chance in a few years, it's going to be something like smokestack-type industry, just because it's in your comprehensive plan. And if you look at the big map that you showed a moment ago that showed Rivian is less than a mile away, once Rivian gets here, it's going to be a whole different feel right there anyway. The Nelson Creek is your division. And so, it makes sense to me for a project like that because it contains it there. It's not going to spread out all across the east side of Newton County, which is what I, what I can sense. So, I see both sides of it, but I think this is a very logical project, and I do think it would bring jobs. And I also think it would be a, a way for you guys and the county to put a, a period, a stop to all the Rivian and the Facebook and what this is like, you know, boom, the end. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. Um, Brian, would you hold, um, five minutes and fifty-six seconds, please? Um, we also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. If you would, come at this time, state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone that would like to oppose tonight?
Again, uh, for the record, my name is Bob Mulvihill. I live on eight, seven, eight, Social Circle Road, the road that's going to be impacted. I might observe that the two people speaking for Oxford, Roswell, Georgia, they don't live on Social Circle Road. Um, I'm going to be the one that's going to be impacted. And the one thing that Mr. Osborne said that, that I find a little hard to believe is that Social Circle Road will not be impacted. Well, if it's not going to be impacted, why are you making improvements on Social Circle Road if not for the trucks to be able to turn into it? Um, and anyone that lives in our area, anyone that lives in our... By the way, the other thing, too, that gentleman from Oxford, he, he wants that wall built so that Oxford doesn't get impacted. So, um, but the, the, um, uh, the road improvements on Social Circle, anybody that lives in our area, and I'll have people come up and back me up. When eleven gets impacted, when two-seventy-eight gets impacted, the only way to get to where, where these people want to build this million square feet of, of, um, warehouse is by Social Circle Road. It's the only one that connects everything. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else would like to oppose tonight?
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Boyd. I live on Social Circle Road. I've been over there, my family's been over there for over a hundred years, and we seen a lot of changes coming. Like most, I'll say it was a dirt road when we first got there. It cannot, that road cannot handle the traffic. It cannot. The people that's going to be coming into our neighborhood, the workers, they're going to have to go somewhere. Social Circle Road, Highway eleven. We already can't get out on Highway eleven. Two-seventy-eight, I said you're going to make changes, but how you going to widen Social Circle Road? You're going to take up property to horse farm, or cattle, cattle, my neighbors got cattle, horses, goats. You're going to take up all of that. We're not going to have nothing. You're smothering us. The traffic, what about the, uh, air quality? What kind of air quality we're going to have with all the diesels running? Like I said, you're going to have spills. The, the road cannot handle that kind of traffic, not Social Circle Road. Two-seventy-eight, there's going to be a lot of improvement on it. You already got Rivian, Facebook, Meadow, that traffic already cuts, shortcuts come through there. You can't walk on the road no more. You can't even pick up our own trash on the road. People come out here, litter, throw trash out, we can't pick that up. So, I really wish you would have denied this application for this occasion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Ron Downton. I live at nine forty-three Social Circle Road. Uh, since the Social Circle bypass has gone in, I don't know about traffic studies, but since that bypass has gone in, we still have increased traffic down our road. Uh, trucks come down it, big trucks. I believe there's an eighteen-ton limit on the road. Um, these trucks can come in there with much more weight than that. I do oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Again, Jeff Spencer, thirty-old, Blue Point, Social Circle. My opposition to this, uh, as I started to say before, rests with just living in that area. Uh, I know Facebook, uh, you can look over to the east, you can't even see stars at all. That's just probably a minor point, but, uh, it'd be nice to actually see some. Uh, as far as trash on the road, it's disgusting. I mean, my wife and I pick up trash all the time, just we can't stand it. I mean, and that's right now. Imagine what it's going to be later on. That's, uh, as far as noise goes, these air brakes, as I mentioned before, from trucks. I mean, I think everybody knows what an air brake sounds like on an eighteen-wheeler. It, it sounds like a bomb going off. It's going to be all over the place, cars, I hear all kinds of stuff. Uh, Highway, Highway eleven, access from two-seventy-eight, in the morning, in the afternoon, there's a long line, and that's right now. Okay, even with the roundabout they're building, that's going to help a little bit, but the time you get all these things built, Rivian gets going, you won't even be able to get on two-seventy-eight. As far as a person living there, that's, this is horrible. Uh, you know, it's like, you may as well just tell us, uh, our way of life is ended, but, uh, that's just our opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
I'm Michael Downton. I live on Social Circle Road. Um, he, gentleman made the comment about, I hope you don't let your kids play on the road. Reality is, yes, our kids do play on the road. That's what happens when you live out in the country. You don't have nice little sidewalks and parks and everything to go play in, so you play with where you live. And that's, this is where we live. And the reality of it is, I mean, you're hearing our guys talk, we take care of our neighborhood because the county don't. They don't clean up the trash. I mean, we get people to come out and mow the grass, but that's really about it. It's up to us to keep it clean, and, and this, this distribution center is not going to help us keep it clean. And that's what it's about for us. Uh, Facebook and Google, they're, they're closer to the interstate. They don't have neighborhoods around them. This is what we, we have. Don't, don't take away our sanctuary. Uh, that's, that's what we're asking for here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Alan Ship in twenty-five Meadow Way in Covington, Georgia. Reason I oppose this, I'm opposed to the amount of traffic it's going to create. Traffic is already bad. It's getting worse by the day. This is going to create more traffic. As far as the jobs go, have these companies signed an agreement to only hire people from Newton County? Is that where the jobs are coming from? From my understanding, there's several counties that border us. The jobs are going to be split among those counties. The other thing is, um, well, I won't get into that. I'll just say I oppose this, and I hope you do as well.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
John Clemmons, one, five, two, Deep Step Road. Again, taxes, 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 and my taxes keep going up, and these people promise money that's going to come into our county and lower my taxes. It has not happened. It ain't happened. And for him to stand there and say that, he may bring taxes to the county, but it's not coming to me. I don't know what y'all doing with it, or whoever's running it's doing with it, but it's not getting down to the folks that are already living here and paying taxes now. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else?
Dave Norton of Newborn. It was stated the site was, had no other use due to the topography and the power lines. If we can rezonate for one, we can rezonate for something else. My opinion, there's quite a few of them around. It would make a beautiful equestrian estate worth millions, pro, bringing a profit to the owners. It was stated last week that the property was good for two things, industrial and hunting land. Well, I hunt, and I know that the largest factor affecting Georgia's wildlife is a loss of habitat. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? That portion of our public hearing is, um, closed. Um, sir, you want to use your five minutes to rebuttal? I'm assuming that's a yes.
I'll try to find my site plan. Is this working, Ch- Chita? All right, I figured out how to use my little red pointer. First on property taxes, the increase in property taxes for this county can be used to improve your schools, sidewalks to your streets, including Social Circle Road.
Sir, if you would, address the board.
And parks.
Sir, if you would, address the board, please.
And parks. So, I think that's a positive for the community. We have designed our site plan, as stated earlier, to include the truck docks interior to the site. They will not be seen from the perimeter. We've got a buffer all the way around here, that's two-hundred feet wide, wide. We're planting another buffer all the way here and here. We're improving two-seventy-eight from our entrance to the intersection. We're improving Social Circle Road from our entrance to two-seventy-eight. There is no destination north on Social Circle Road for trucks. They want to get to I-twenty. They're going to use two-seventy-eight to go to Highway eleven, or two-seventy-eight to go to exit one-on-one. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite, please. Um, Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. It's time I like to make, make a motion to deny R E Z two, three, zero, 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 seven.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion by Commissioner Edwards that we denied this, and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you. It's denied, sir. Ms. Applewhite.
Our chairman, our next petition this evening is also a rezoning case. Uh, case number...
Hold on one second. Thank you, sir. Ms. Applewhite, go ahead, man.
Our case number is R E Z twenty-three dash zero, 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 one, four. It's located on Highway two-two-nine. The parcel size is going to be two-point-six-nine acres of one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-eight-eight acres. The tax ID number is zero, one, two, six, dash, zero, one, five. The existing land use map is rural residential. The existing zoning is A agricultural. The proposed zoning is A R, agricultural residential. It is in the low-density rural residential character area. It's in Little River watershed, Commission District One. Current owner is William T. Elliott, Junior, and our petitioner is John Knight. The applicant's intent is to rezonate the parcel from A agricultural to A R, agricultural residential. In a brief history, on January twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-three, there was no quorum for the Planning Commission meeting. On February fourteenth, the Planning Commission voted four-zero to recommend approval of the Flume Amendment to Rural Residential. And on February twenty-first, the Board of Commissioners approved the Flume Amendment to Rural Residential. On September, September twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, the Planning Commission recommended approval by a vote of four-zero to approve the rezoning to Agricultural Residential. And again, he's only looking at two-point-six-nine acres of the large parent parcel of one-hundred-and-twenty-two-point-eight-eight acres, which is currently zoned A agricultural. And it's looking on the west side of Highway two-two-nine, and the parcel is currently undeveloped. And the site plan analysis shows that a two-point-six-nine acres, which is currently undeveloped, it's part of the larger parcel. And just repeating that. So, the character area, um, it is located in the low-density rural residential character area, which would support the agricultural residential zoning highlighted in blue. And this is in, in your packet, so I'm now going to read through all the, um, requirements for the character area. In conclusion, the proposed residential use is consistent with the policies and intent of the low-density rural residential character area, and with approved zonings in the area. Given the land use and zoning designation of the surrounding properties, there is justification for approval of the proposed agricultural residential zoning. Recommended conditions, should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be... Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for rezoning to agricultural residential, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards. A, submit a minor plat combining the two point six nine acres with parcel one-two-six dash zero-two-seven. B, submit appropriate plans or plats to be reviewed and approved by the Development Services Department, Public Works, Newton County Fire Services, the Watts Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Commission, and G- GDOT as applicable. This is the location of the parcel. The area with a star, that is the two point six nine acres that applicant is looking to rezonate of, you know, which is part of the entire a hundred and twenty-two acre parcel. That section is still currently zoned A agricultural. And they are going to be combining it with the little parcel just to the north of it to make a total of five acres. Rural residential, um, flume was recently approved by the board. It is in a Little River Watershed, currently in District One. This is a survey that was submitted by the applicant, which is showing that the two parcels will be combined to form the five acres. And if there are any questions for staff?
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna open it up at this time for our public hearing. The applicant, and those that wanna speak in favor tonight, the applicant, and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. You have ten minutes to do so. If you would, please state your name, your address for the record, please. The applicant, and those that would like to speak in favor tonight.
John Knight. I live fifteen oh one Amherstap Studded Road, Walton County. And, uh, the owner of the lot on the north, uh, is zoned AR. And to settle an estate, his relative wanted to give him extra land to bring him up to five acres. Well, the what he wanted to give him is zoned agricultural, and the county will not let you, uh, combine two lots of different zonings. So that's the whole reason for the zoning, just so you can combine them. There's nothing going on, uh, other than that. He, the, uh, state owner of the big piece wants to increase that, uh, relative's lot size to around five acres, and it can't be done until the two zonings are the same. It's that simple.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else, anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? You can, you can take your seat, sir. Yeah. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Sir, would you like to, um, reserve your time to rebuttal? Well, we gonna, we gonna, we gonna- Okay, all right. Thank you, sir. All right, that portion of our public hearing is closed. Um, we also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your, for the record, please. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Anyone would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. I think this is also in District One.
Ms. Chairman, thank you. Motion to approve REZ two-three zero 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 one four. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Is there a second? It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards, and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Chairman, our next petition this evening is case number, it's also a rezoning case. Case number REZ twenty-three dash zero 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 one five, located at eighty-four Lester Road on one point nine four acres. Tax ID is zero 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 seven eight zero zero three. The existing land use map is mixed use. The existing zoning is R-two, single-family residential. The proposed zoning is highway commercial. It is located in the emerging suburban character area, in the South River Watershed, and in Commission District Two. The current owner is Vicky L. Patrick, and our petitioner is Mark Walton. An applicant's intent is to rezone the one point nine four acres from R-two, single-family residential to highway commercial for a proposed septic location for adjacent lots, which is owned by Georgia Highway Twenty LLC. So it's a former part of their project. The site, again, consists of the one point nine four acres with R-two zoning and a mixed-use flume. There's a home located on the lot, but it's not currently in use. And again, the proposed use for this lot is to be able to include septic for the commercial use that they wanna do on the adjacent lots, which would be fifty-three sixty-one highway twenty, fifty-three sixty-nine highway twenty, and highway twenty, with a tax ID of zero zero seven eight zero six three eight. History, on nine twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended approval to rezonate highway commercial by vote of four-zero. And in conclusion to the findings provided, staff's recommended conditions are incorporated into the development of the site. The proposed zone change to highway commercial is consistent with the policies and intent of the comprehensive plan, and with approved zonings in the area. So based on the site plan, um, that the applicant submitted, uh, back in July, staff has the following considerations in terms of land use and density. Right, applicant is proposing for the lot to be rezoned to the commercial use for septic, um, purposes. And the comprehensive plan has designated a future land use for this one point nine four acres as mixed use, so it is compatible. The character area, as we said, is immersion suburban. This is included in your packets, so I won't read through it. But one of the appropriate zonings is highway commercial. And in conclusion, given the fact that the property is in proximity to commercial zonings, and applicant's proposed uses of the land, staff is of the opinion that the rezoning may be appropriate for this site. Recommended conditions. Should this petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for rezoning to highway commercial, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following. A, a minor plat must be provided by the Department of Development Services to combine this lot with the adjacent lot at fifty-three sixty-one highway twenty. B, to restrict the use of this particular lot for septic location only. And that's because Lester Road will not support, um, highway commercial. C, any required permits must be obtained from the Department of Development Services before any construction or development on the property. And D, permits must be obtained from external agencies, such as GDOT, the Watts Authority, Georgia Soil and Water Commission as applicable. This is the location of the parcel, uh, we're looking at. It's located on the internal street there, at Lester Road. Currently zoned R-two, single-family residential. And the two, uh, lots in red that it's adjacent to, those are the two lots it's connected to. So the septic would be for those two lots there when the project gets there, when they decide to use that. The flume is mixed use, which would support the highway commercial zoning. It's in the South River Watershed. And this is a survey that was provided by the applicant. And if there are any questions for staff? The applicant should be here.
Thank you, ma'am. We're gonna open it up for the applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight. The applicant and those that would like to speak in favor tonight.
Hello, Chairman-
Good evening.
Commissioners, I'm Mark Walton with Patrick and Associates Surveyors. And if you'll notice, I work for Patrick and Associates, and this property is owned by Vicky Patrick, which is the founder of our company's widow. And it was originally owned by his parents, and they lived there for decades until their death. And, uh, since that time, it's gone on, and some of David and Vicky's children have lived there, and they've moved on to their own homes. And, uh, for the past couple of years, it's just, the little house out there has sort of become derelict. And they were approached by the commercial property, um, that fronts out on the highway two twelve and twenty there. And were asked if they would be interested in selling it for septic use only. And I would like to bring up, in that condition B, uh, that the director read, we would also like to say septic and stormwater uses, which are both passive-type uses. Um, but, uh, the people that front the highway would like to use their property to have whatever retail use or, uh, uses that they're allowed, and they would just like to use this for septic and, uh, stormwater.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I, I would like to reserve any time if you don't have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Eight, eight minutes and fifty-one seconds. We got you, sir. All right. Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone else would like to speak in favor tonight? Thank you. We also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight. You may come at this time. Please state your name, your address for the record, please. Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Anyone that would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. That portion of our public hearing is closed. Commissioner Mason?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I would like to take this opportunity to, uh, make a motion to approve REZ two-three dash zero 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 one five with staff recommendations.
Is there a second, please? It's been motion by Commissioner Mason and second by, um, Commissioner Edwards. Any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman. Our next, uh, petition this evening is a conditional use permit. It is for case number CUP twenty-three dash zero 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 seven. Proposed use is for truck parking and an auto body shop. It is located at fifty-three South Highway eleven, highway eleven and highway eleven. Parcel sizes are six point three acres, one point three five acres, and five point eight nine acres, which brings it to a total of thirteen point five four acres. The tax ID numbers are zero one one two dash zero two nine, zero one one three dash one three eight B, and zero one one three dash one three eight H. The future land use map, uh, or the flume is a development node. The existing zoning is general commercial, and it's also in the brick store overlay tier two, which is moderate commercial. Character area is live-work and suburban emergent, suburban, emerging suburban. The watershed is Bear Creek, Commission District One, and the owner is Tommy E. Breedlove, and our petitioner is Laurie Kingry. The applicant's intent is to expand the current, uh, dispatch use to add long-term truck parking and an auto body shop. And there's quite a bit of history on this. Um, on September twenty-sixth of twenty-twenty-three, the planning commission recommended denial of this petition by vote of four-zero. And the commission stated that applicant, uh, was trying to exceed the current conditions that were already in place by the board. On September twenty-seventh, twenty-twelve, there was a variance, the BZA approved VAR twelve dash zero 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 one two seven to waive the requirements to install sidewalks and a D cell lane along highway eleven south. And these were the conditions that they had in place, um, which I, I won't read all of them, but for condition two, it just said that at such time that the proposed use of the property is either changed or expanded, which is what we're, uh, requesting, which is what the applicant is requesting today. The plan director, in conjunction with the county engineer, may require the installation of a D cell lane and/or sidewalks prior to the issuance of a new or renewed business license. So this will, um, I'd like the board to keep that condition in mind for the variance. And then on November twentieth, twenty-twelve, the BOC approved the following. They approved a rezoning, REZ twelve dash zero zero one two six, which was to rezone the property from neighborhood commercial to general commercial. And they also approved a conditional use permit at that time, CUP twelve dash zero 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 one two five, which was a conditional use permit to allow a truck dispatch facility to be located in the general commercial zoning and the Bear Creek watershed. And these were the conditions that they put in place at the time. These are included in your packets, so I won't, um, read through them at this time. And this is a list continued of the conditions that they put in place. They had some restricted uses and some other items that they required. So coming back to today's project, the subject site is approximately thirteen point five four acres total, and in a tier two of the Brick Store Overlay District. So the current dispatch use is located at fifty-three South Highway eleven. And the current business is also located only on that lot. And this lot was found not to be in compliance, as there were several businesses operating on the property without the business licenses at the time, which included the auto body shop. The owner would like to include two adjacent lots, so zero one one three dash one three eight B and zero one one three dash one three eight H, to add long-term parking, and as well as to bring the auto body shop business into compliance. So the property is located in the Brick Store Overlay and the Bear Creek watershed, both of which, uh, these require a cup for the uses that are being proposed. And two of the properties have road frontage. The third property is in the rear and land lot. And I just have the definitions here for the auto repair or body shop, um, as well as the requirements for it. Again, these are included in your packets, so I won't read through those. And then, of course, for the truck parking, um, slash dispatch, these are the definitions as well as their requirements. And the site plan analysis. So based on the site plans and the renderings that were submitted by the applicant on July seventh, um, staff offers the following considerations when looking at fencing, lighting of property, property development standards, general design standards, and signage. So the applicant is proposing to expand the current truck dispatch facility to include long-term truck parking and an auto body shop to complete minor repairs. The auto body shop currently operates out of one of the buildings on the property, but does not have a business license. The area of operation is approximately two thousand square feet. The property has a gravel parking lot with currently U-Hauls, RVs, and trucks currently parked there. And the site plan proposes adding a hundred and five tractor-trailer parking spaces to the existing fifty spaces. It also shows a double row of evergreen trees on the perimeter and a hundred and fifty-foot buffer on the northern portion of the property. So in conclusion, the property is zoned general commercial, which allows truck parking and an auto auto shop, but, but would be with a conditional use permit, however. They are in the Brick Store Overlay as well as the Bear Creek watershed, and like I said, which requires a cup to operate. There are multiple busi- there were multiple businesses operating on the property without a license. Um, and quote enforcement has since addressed those. So should this petition meet the standards of Division four seven zero of the two thousand and nine county zoning ordinance, it may be appropriate for this location. The site plan proposes adding a hundred and five tractor-trailer parking spaces to the existing fifty spaces. It also shows a double row of evergreens. Staff recommends that should the board approve this cup, request that the approval be with conditions listed below. Recommended conditions. So should the petition be approved by the Board of Commissioners, it should be approved for a conditional use permit to expand the current use for truck parking and add a minor auto body shop, subject to the owner's agreement to the following enumerated conditions. Where these conditions conflict with the stipulations and offerings contained in the letter of intent, these conditions shall supersede unless specifically stipulated by the Board of Commissioners. One, to the owner's agreement to abide by the following development standards and regulations. So one, all conditions from REZ twelve dash zero 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 one two six, CUP twelve dash zero 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 one two five, and VAR twelve dash zero 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 one two seven shall remain in effect. Only truck, RV, and boat parking shall be allowed. An auto body shop completing minor repairs shall be allowed in the existing two thousand square foot building number two on the property it currently operates out of. This shall not conflict with the BOC condition number one A two from the REZ twelve case, as well as the CUP twenty-twelve case, which prohibits major auto repair and auto sales. Four, there shall be a hundred and fifty-foot on disturb perimeter buffer around the site. This may be reduced by seven to five feet by an opaque wall or fence per section five-ten, six-six-five. And we have five, a minor plat must be completed to combine parcels zero one one two dash zero two nine, zero one one three dash one three eight B, and zero one one three dash one three eight H. Six, obtain and maintain a business license. Seven, all activities for the minor auto body shop shall be carried on entirely within the enclosed building. Eight, all landscaping to be approved by the county. Lighting shall be done, cast, cut off luminaires facing inward to the property. Nine, adhere to the requirement- Nine, adhere to the requirements in ordinance for truck parking. Ten, obtain a variance to allow truck parking less than five hundred feet from residential zoning. And eleven, prior to any licenses being issued, all plans must be approved by Development Services, the Fire Marshal, Public Works, and all applicable external agencies such as GDOT, the Water Authority, and Georgia Soil and Water Commission. This is the location of the properties currently, so fifty-five, Highway fifty-five eleven, fifty-three eleven, is the one that shows the current parking area with trucks on it there. They are proposing to add the other two lots of the bottom, one is landlocked, the one to the east, and then we have the one closer to the road. Current zoning is general commercial. It's in the brick store overlay, shown in the pink, kind of brownish area down there. Development node is the current flume. Is in the Bear Creek watershed. And this is in Commissioner District One. So these are the surveys that were provided by the applicant. These are the last two parcels. This is the proposed site plan where they showed a hundred and fifty-foot buffer to the north of the parcel, that little white area there, and they do need to show it on the eastern side as well. And then we have the existing parcel close to the road and the two proposed parcels they're looking at. And then they show the hatched area shows where the proposed truck parking is gonna be. And it is a gravel lot currently. These are photos that were submitted by the applicant, I'm just gonna quickly go through them, the numbers correlate with the photos. So this is what the area currently looks like, you can see they have like a U-Hauls and so on currently parked there now. These are the buildings that are on there, I think this building, I believe is the one that has the auto body shop in it currently. I'm sorry, actually building number two has it, you have an RV out there, the gravel parking lot, trucks, and these are just pictures that the applicant provided, and they wanted the board to see. And that's just the open area, the two auto lots. And if there are any other questions, and applicant was not able to make it today. The representative, so if there's anyone, is, is, is a public hearing, Chairman?
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, we're gonna open it up now for, um, those that want, would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? Anyone would like to speak in favor tonight? That portion of our public hearing is closed, we also allow ten minutes for those that would like to oppose tonight, you may come at this time, please state your name and your address for the record, please. Anyone would like to oppose tonight?
Kim Shu, sixty Quail Valley Road Social Circle, once again, I did not think I would be talking about this, I came for something totally different. Um, but this particular location, what the photos do not show you is the church that's right across the street, the church that's adjacent to this property, as well as the residential home that's on the corner of this lot. What you also didn't see in the package was the light pollution that is currently caused by the, um, truck parking that is already there, and I find it very hard to offer anyone an approval when they don't currently have a business license and have been operating without a business license. So for those reasons, I would vote to deny this.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else would like to oppose tonight?
My name's Dave Norton from Newborn. I haven't studied this case like I did the others tonight, uh, but I do live close to this, I've seen the signs up, I knew there was change being wanted to be done there. So my only thing is the, uh, right here on your agenda, at the top of the page, thought for the day, be the change that you wish to see in the world, thank you.
Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Anyone else would like to oppose tonight? Ms. Applewhite. And I think this is in District One.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, motion to deny CUP two-three-zero-zero-zero-seven. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Ms. Applewhite, uh, what other businesses without licenses were operating on this particular piece of property?
Yeah, they had the auto body shop, there was, um, like a slight, kind of a small distribution center, packaging was another one that was out there. So it was, and then, of course, the truck parking, the long-term truck parking that was not originally allowed in there. So they were, again, two or three other businesses, those have since, the owner has since gotten rid of those because of our code enforcement team that handled that, and this, the purpose of this cup today was to bring the property into compliance by applying for a cup to do the long-term parking and to keep the auto body shop there, which has been, I think, like, three or four years out there and no license.
Thank you, I, and, and, and one other point, Mr. Chairman, is I know when we, we allowed this, um, facility to expand several years ago, I forget exactly when that was, for truck turnaround, they used it to add truck, the number of trucks to the lot, um, which was not part of the, part of the deal, so. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Thank you, any more, Commissioner Sanders?
Director Applewhite, I'm trying to understand, so there is currently an auto body shop that's operational right now?
Yeah, minor repairs, um, according to the applicant.
And it's been there how long?
I think that was something about three or four years.
And so this is to get them in compliance?
They would like to, in order for them to even have operated in the first place, they should have come through this process of obtaining a cup, which they did not, so they have been technically operating illegally for that time. And this brought to our attention that that's what was happening on the property.
Okay, so my next question is to Commissioner Edwards, the denial, and I don't know if you're able to answer my question, do we not want to, the business who's been operating for three years, even though it's not operational, I mean, it's operational, because per the state of, of Georgia, you don't have to be, have to have a business license, per the state of Georgia, but of course Newton County has an ordinance where we require that, but the state of Georgia does not require that. So I just wanted to find out, are we trying to stop the business, or are we trying to help them get in compliance?
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you for that question. My hope is that they would come, come into compliance, um, but their track record of the conditional use permits has not been good. Uh, they abused the last, this particular piece of property, abused the last conditional use permit we gave them. So my wish is that we deny this particular cup and hope that they come into compliance. Who knows, sometime down the road they come back and plug in. Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you, sir.
So, once, if, if, if this is denied, what is the next step for that business? Because my only concern is, is, I, I apologize, I'm not familiar with the business that's in my colleague's area. So once, if it's denied, what is the next step for that business that's currently there?
If the conditional use permit is denied tonight, the business will not be able to operate, because they don't have a special use permit from the board to do so.
And are they able to apply, once they get everything in compliance, their operational license and come through, I guess, zoning, planning?
Only if the cup is produced tonight, if, if only the cup is approved tonight, then can they apply for a business license. If the cup is denied tonight, then they would have to cease operating there.
Okay, so what have they been doing so far that has been detrimental to the community? I heard some of the things, but from code enforcement, leeway, what has been happening?
From a code enforcement standpoint, they were operating without a business license, that's what the initial complaint we received came in for.
So that's the only thing as far as them being out of compliance, was just the business license, was there anything happening that was affecting the community as per se?
We have not had complaints from anyone regarding that. So it would just be them just operating, you know, without the license and without a special use permit to do the business there.
Okay.
So they were just, they've been out of compliance all these years.
Okay, so, okay.
And they've never been issued a business license.
And the business license the only issue?
They've never been issued one, so it's not a case where they're grandfathered in, because they never came, they never legally obtained a license or a permit to do the business there. So that's a risk they took without, you know, with operating out, going through this process and getting permission from the board.
And they currently own the building?
No, the building is owned by Ms. Breedlove, he owns the entire property, he is leasing it out to them. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you. So during this, a period of time between them working somewhat illegally, uh, did code enforcement go and give them like a letter of citation or something saying you have to, um, maybe comply, or take him before, take him to probate court or anything, or we just ignored it?
No, 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 when we received the, this complaint, um, we issued them a notice, uh, they have so many days, usually about thirty days, and in the meantime, they can either come into the department and meet with us to discuss a path forward, which is what they did, and they opted to come and apply for a conditional use permit so they can get a business license. While that is happening, they're still allowed to work out there, so to speak, while we're going through this process. But based on what is decided tonight, that will determine if they can continue or if they just need to cease, um, operating out of that building, they may have to relocate to somewhere else that is more suitable.
Commissioner Edwards?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, so, so Ms. Applewhite, the, the, the truck terminal or the truck parking or the truck, whatever, is still allowed? That, that business is still allowed there, correct?
They have the current conditional use permit that we had, it allows, um, it says a dispatch, it's a dispatch, which usually allows trucks in and out, it's not necessarily for long-term parking, but yes, that business can continue with a truck dispatch.
Right, so they're add, they're looking to add acreage and, and add, um, a, a auto body repair shop, is that correct?
That is what they're requesting.
Auto body repair shop is not allowed in tier-two though, right?
With a conditional use permit, it is allowed in the Bear Creek watershed, and tier-two does not prohibit auto body repaired, prohibits auto recovery, which is a different business. But the minor auto body repairs, um, you know, and according to definition, you know, it's small items like mufflers and so on, that they are, let me go back to the definition for the auto.
But in the, but in the overlay, the tier-two portion of the overlay, is, is this, this is not allowed?
It doesn't prohibit it. It only prohibits auto recovery, so, yeah, technically it would, because the brick store overlay defaults back to the general, um, land, general use table. And in the general use table, that use is allowed in the zoning that they're in. So the zoning allows it, um, and then the Bear Creek watershed is what is requiring it to get this cup today.
Okay, but they are allowed to still function with, within the realm of their truck, their trucking operations, whatever they are.
Truck dispatch, yes, they can do that part.
All right, thank you, Ms. Chairman, thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? What was the planning commission?
Planning commission recommended denial.
I, I support the planning commission. Three, um, three-two, denial. Thank you, Ms. Applewhite.
Thank you, Chairman, that was the last, um, petition.
Thank you, Ms. Apple.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, we are reverting back to number eleven, Human Resources requesting approval of the defined benefits plan contract, contact between Newton County and the Association County Commissioners of Georgia, which is ACCG. We have our Director of HR, Ms. Amanda Shoemaker, and it is time-sensitive, it is budgeted, pages ten through thirty-nine.
Hello, everyone. Tonight, HR is requesting the approval of the divine, defined benefits plan contract for our employees between Newton County and the Association of County Commissioners of Georgia. The funding has been previously approved in this, um, budget season, the contract has been reviewed by Patrick with Derodan Davis for legal sufficiency, and now I'm gonna turn the mic over to Trey Johnson so that he can give you more, um, specifics in terms of the highlights of the plan.
Thank you, Amanda, it's nice to see everybody again. My name's Trey Johnson, I'm the Regional Client Manager with ACCG, and Newton County is part of my territory, so, um, I make frequent visits out here to meet with your employees and work with them on their retirement. Like Amanda said, I just wanted to go over the, the highlights of the, uh, the plan documents. So first and foremost, it'll be a January one, twenty-twenty-four effective date. The plan will have a five-year vesting schedule with a multiplier of one and a quarter percent, and giving all employees all of their past service credit. In addition to that, employees will have the option to purchase a higher multiplier in, uh, point-two-five percent increments up to two percent. So in other words, uh, an employee could purchase, they could choose to purchase an extra two, uh, point-two-five percent, point-five percent, or point-seven-five percent, um, bringing their total multiplier to, uh, one and a half, one and three-quarters, or two percent. That would be an option for the employees to do. All full-time employees are required to contribute two percent of their compensation to the plan, and vested employees are eligible to draw their monthly benefit at age sixty-five. There are no early withdrawal options, um, but I wanted to make a point that thi, this will be a living document, a living plan, and amendments will be allowed to add certain enhancements or, um, changes to the plan as, um, as it sees fit by the commissioners. Disability payments are available, so the requirements for that are, uh, an employee would have to be fifty years of age with ten years of vesting service, and, um, they would have to be deemed disabled by social security and have their awards letter, um, and they would be able to draw their, uh, monthly benefit at that time. There are death benefits that are associated with the plan, so there's pre-retirement death benefit, post-retirement disability and deferred vested death benefits, which would equal to fifty times the monthly benefit amount, and that would be paid in the form of a lump sum to their beneficiaries. Once the, um, participant or the employee is eligible to receive their monthly benefit, they would have the, um, option to, to leave a portion of their monthly benefit to a survivor, um, and so that's part of the benefit election process that, uh, we help them with. And, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you guys have about the, the plan documents or the plan itself.
Commissioner Henderson?
Thank you, Mr. C. Um, and I know with the state of covenant defined benefit plan, um, recently, they gave their employees a, a five percent increase. Would we have something similar today as something I'm asking?
A five percent increase into?
Oh, words, they would give them a certain amount of money, and then this year they said that they would give them additional five percent.
Kind of like a cost of living adjustment? No, sir, that's, that's an, an option within the plan documents, but it, it, it's not included in the, in the plan.
Can we get a motion, please? Been motioned by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Mason, any discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh, thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, the next item we have is item number twelve, Public Works, our presenter is Mr. Chester Clegg, Director of Public Works, they're requesting approval for the chairman to execute a contract with Newton Trails for the restoration of Cricket Frog Trestle over the Alcoa Ridge River Project. There are impact fees, contract amount four hundred thousand, and that is in pages forty to fifty of your books.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So Newton Trails has requested that Newton County partner with them to fund the rehabilitation of the trestle over Alcoa River. And the trestle is the finer ma, final major piece of the fourteen-mile Cricket Frog Trail that is needed, uh, that is needed to tie the town of New Bern to the Turner Lake Complex in the city of Covington. And the PATH Foundation is a nonprofit organization that specializes in building multi-use trails and is offering consulting on the, uh, trestle rehabilitation for free, and Newton Trails and the PATH Foundation are, um, to provide the engineering, design plans, and specifications. The county, uh, will bid out and administer the construction contract. And so, the cost estimate for the rehabilitation of the bridge is seven hundred thousand dollars, and the contract says that the county would provide a, a maximum of four hundred thousand dollars of the seven hundred. And I have, um, included the agreement in the package for your review.
Thank you, sir. Um, Chester, you want? Chester, you want to state what all the funds is coming from?
The funds would be from impact fees and splosts.
Thank you, sir. I seek a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, it's time I'd like to make a motion to approve for the chairman to execute a contract with Newton Trails for the restoration of the Cricket Frog Trestle over Alcove River.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion? Commissioner Sanders?
It's basically in regards to the impact fees, and I don't see our finance director in the audience. My question was, how much do we have in the budget of the amount of impact fees that has been collected so far? Because the reason why I'm asking that question is because a lot of the residents who are in the most dense areas that produce these impact fees don't see it going back into their communities. So I don't know if anybody in the room can answer that question of how much impact fees we have collected?
The finance directors are not here.
Okay. If we can put that on record to have that question asked to the finance director, to get that back to me to find out, because that has been the question posed to the residents of Newton County.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you so much.
Mr. Chair, the next items we have on the agenda are items number thirteen and fourteen. Mr. Jeff Prime will do the presentation. The first, number thirteen, BOC Purchasing Request Approval of Contract Sunbelt Builders for the Design of the Admin Building Renovations. And then also number fourteen is requesting approval of the contract for Sunbelt Builders for the design of RL Cousins Center renovations. The splosts twenty twenty-three is the funding source for both. Both have been budgeted, and they are located on pages fifty-one and fifty-two of your books.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. We, several weeks back, put out RFPs for design build services for both of these projects. We had multiple submissions. We worked with two different evaluation selection committees to review those, both from the technical side and also from the fees. In both cases, Sunbelt Builders have been ranked number one. I have completed the negotiation with them, is for the numbers that you see in your packet. And so tonight we are requesting the authority to move forward and get that, those executed and get those projects moving forward.
I seek a motion for number thirteen.
Second.
It's a motion by Commissioner Edwards and second by Commissioner Mason. Any discussion?
Yes. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
This is, this is in District Four. I would like to, you know, I know it's kind of moving at fast pace, and I, and I know that we haven't had a community meeting over there, and I would like to not pause it, but have a, a community meeting as soon as possible, so we get Sunbelt yourself, or Mr. Prime, and maybe the Recreation Director, Dwayne, over and have a community meeting at the TK Adams Building, so that we can address the community as to what's the plans of being taking place at the historic RL Cousins School.
I'm sorry, I'm a little bit ahead of myself, yeah.
And I have an answer for you.
Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four. Mr. Prime.
So the process that we've got, to answer your question, the process that we've got built into the contract with Sunbelt is to work with the stakeholders and the tenants that are there to look at two options. Option one is to renovate the existing facilities. Option two would be to look at building, demolishing and building new facilities that are there. That will be put together in conceptual plans, they'll be costed, and then it will come back to the board seeking direction of which way we want to move forward with that.
I think that's, that's a, that's a good idea, but we want to advertise in time enough to let the citizen know to come over so that they can?
Absolutely.
Uh, you know, look at the plan. Yes, got to have input. Look at the plans and stuff, and so they go over and ask questions, and so they know exactly where we're going. And I just, just going to say this, the stakeholder is anybody, any alumni, whoever attended RL Cousins School, such as myself and several others, who wants to have that input. And I'm gonna, if it's, if it's okay with this board, set up a meeting over at TK Adams Building, so that we can sit, put this meeting together, and I get with Ms. Jacky, and so as soon as possible, so that people can come in and give their input.
So is there a motion tonight?
Move forward.
Yeah.
So moved as stated by Mr. Prime.
Thank you, sir. It's been, it's been, can I get a second?
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? Commissioner Henderson.
I would like to also admit, admit my motion to make a part of it, that particular community meeting, if I may.
Second.
It's been motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Sanders. Any more discussion? All in favor? It passes four oh. Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is citizens' comments, I think. Yep, citizen comments. This opportunity will allow citizens, three minutes to make comments. You have three minutes to come up and make your comments. Please state your name, your address for the record, please.
Hello, how are you guys? My name is Nachtravius. My address is seven one two four Pioneer Drive, Southwest Covington, Georgia, three zero zero one four. I'm coming today to ask you guys about an annual event that we have for the kids with Resilient Women, which is our annual trunk and treat. We've been trying to get in contact with you guys for a couple of weeks now, and we usually have it at the Nelson Heights Community Center. I have a few dates here, the twenty-second, I got in touch with Harold Cooper via email, well, I contacted him via email. The twenty-sixth, I talked about it at a community meeting, and then I finally talked to his secretary, and it was told that they would get back to me. Nothing ever happened, and Halloween is approaching, so I'm just trying to see if we're going to be able to use the building, or are we not, or do we have to cancel the event?
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Anyone else? I'm sorry? Yeah, okay. Yeah, I got you. Anyone else? Citizen comments? Citizen comments? Commissioner Edwards.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'd like to thank my fellow commissioners for the support on the plethora of zoning requests and flume changes and, and those items tonight. Thank you very much for the support, and you, Ms. Chairman. Thank you.
Sir, if you could hang around for a few minutes. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mason?
I don't have any time.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanders?
Just a short story. One winter morning, a van was on an icy bridge. The driver of that van lost control due to the nature of the bridge. Miraculously rode on the rails of that bridge, witnessed by onlookers, before thrown from the windshield, found under the tires of another vehicle. The left side of their face bore scars, and all the skin scraped off their face, where chunks of flesh was missing from their leg. As they were searching for this person, they found them under the tires of another vehicle with two broken arms. That person I'm talking about is myself, Commissioner Sanders. The reason why I brought up this story is because a month ago, well, about three weeks ago, I requested a county vehicle. And I've never had any issues requesting county vehicles. I've always gotten the same vehicle. Just recently, last time, when I requested that county vehicle, there was some situations where there was a check engine light. And so I stated, I wanted to make sure that when y'all give me county vehicles, because the commissioners changed the policy, that we are to utilize county vehicles. And so I said, I just want to make sure that it's a maintained vehicle, so if I'm driving three hours as a female, that I'm not in Timbuktu on side of the road because it has not been maintained. The county manager, after our county clerk asked me, has anyone responded to you, Commissioner? That was like two weeks later. I said, I have not received a response. And so she said, I'm gonna check on that for you. I finally got a response, and the county manager said, we have a vehicle for you, Commissioner Sanders. I said, can you tell me what is the vehicle, because I want to make sure that it's maintenance and to make sure that it's safe to drive? I never heard a response. Two weeks went by. I asked again, three emails, three emails. I asked again. The day before, I was getting ready to leave, I received an email from our county manager that said, Commissioner Sanders, we have a vehicle for you, and it's a thirteen-passenger van. Yes. And I said, I'm not comfortable driving a van I've never driven before. And the reason why I was telling him I was uncomfortable is because of my past of being in a major accident in a van. I shouldn't have to tell somebody why I'm uncomfortable. If you are a leader and you're a manager, you should listen. I shouldn't have to tell you my past story, why I'm not comfortable driving a van. First of all, is it appropriate or acceptable to give one person a van with thirteen, fifteen people not even on? When we have new vehicles in this county, and I have driven SUVs to go to various places. So what people meant for evil, God means for your good. And I wish he was here, because I don't talk behind your back, I tell you to your face. And so I want to thank him also, because he helped me get through fears of being in a van. He helped me get through that. And also, being at that event, I met some wonderful people that want to do some great things in Newton County. So God always prevails at the end. So my story, my moral to my story is this, when you are in leadership, listen to that person, because you never know what they went through and what they've gone through and the reason why they telling you, I'm uncomfortable. Thank you.
Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you, Ms. C. I'm just, just, just want to just share this with the board. I've had some requests for drunk, drunk tree, and I think Ms. Deminalis requests for Thanksgiving, and they wanted me as their district commissioner to give a list to Ms. Jacky, and then ask for the consistent, consensus of the board to have an event, events at Nelson Heights Community Center, for the community. We also know that the, what is it, Pickup Trash Day that's coming over at Nelson Heights, we, we request that the building be open to use it for our trash pickup, and it's be a part of Nelson Heights and also a part of Spring Hill Community. And so we're asking that another addition of dunks to be placed at Spring Hill Community. So we're not going to let that particular building, unless, I guess, the commission can't have access to any county facility, sit there without having some events that is requested by the community to be added to that particular building or buildings. And so we're going to be giving Ms. Jacky to write out those, that particular request and ask for a consensus that that building be used as it was built for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. We don't have a need for a second session. I seek a motion that we adjourn. It's a motion by Commissioner Henderson and second by Commissioner Edwards. All in favor? We stand adjourned. Thank you so much.